With that, we'll begin this evening's meeting of the Monday, February 1st, 2021, 6:00 PM, meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. And as usual, we'll open our meeting with an invocation. And Commissioner Williams will lead us in that place.
If you're so inclined, please bow your heads in prayer. Oh heavenly Father, we give you respect and acknowledge you as our Creator and Provider, the Author and Finisher of all things. It is you who are omnipresent. You are everywhere, Lord. It is you who are omnipotent. You have all power. It is you who are omniscient. You are all-seeing and knowing. God, as we begin this meeting, we ask that you would guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may do the county's business successfully. We ask for wisdom and discernment. Help us, Lord, to accomplish our goals while displaying your character. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The United States of America, and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we will begin with our public hearing and its rezoning request, CZ 2020-002, courtyards at Howie Farms. Lee?
As you stated, this is a case CZ 2020-002, Howie Farms rezoning. If you'll recall, this is the rezoning request that came before the Board in October. And during, when the Board was making its decision, referred it back to the planning Board because of a couple of significant changes that were made to the plan. Those main changes were moving the entrance from Billy Howie, which is right here. The old entrance used to, basically, this cul-de-sac was extended out to Billy Howie Road. That entrance was moved from there over to Waxall Indian Trail Road. And the density was reduced. They brought the overall number of units, overall number of units down to 89 units, down from, I believe, 115. So again, they referred that, or the Board referred that back to the Union County Planning Board for reconsideration. Planning Board did hear that application last month, and basically, they really voted the same way. Previous recommendation, which I believe was in August, was a four-to-two recommendation to deny. And the recommendation last month was also a four-to-two recommendation to deny. Just some photographs of the property, and I'll be brief because I know that most of you have seen this presentation before. Mr. Williams, I don't think you have seen this yet. But some photographs of the property. These are mainly off of Billy Howie Road. So this is standing in the Wesley Oaks neighborhood, looking across the street at the site. The top right and bottom left are looking up and down Billy Howie Road. And this is standing at the site, looking across the street into the Wesley Oaks neighborhood. This site is a doughnut hole. It is surrounded by the town of Wesley Chapel, and is next to a couple of adjacent subdivisions. There is some vacant land to the south. Property is undeveloped, but again, it is in an area that is being developed. Wesley Oaks is a fairly large neighborhood, which I think is made up of three separate sections. You can see there, in that gray, some of those subdivisions that have been developed. And there's also some to the south. But the property that's, for consideration tonight, is currently undeveloped. The only major environmental feature on this property is a stream that does cross that, sort of that flagpole section of the lot that was incorporated in the site plan into common open space. The properties, most of the properties in the area are served by Union County Water and Sewer, but there are some that are served by well and septic. There is water available along Billy Howie Road, and there's sewer available across Billy Howie Road in the Wesley Oaks neighborhood. There's manhole there that they could connect to with a short extension. And of course, all improvements would be at the developer's expense. I did have a conversation with public work staff today. I thought there may be a question about sewer availability. And basically, the answer is that it is in 12 Mile Creek Basin. There is, capacity does currently exist, although it's limited, but these projects would be evaluated as they came in. So it could be that if this was approved, that by the time this made it to the permitting stage, there may not be a capacity available for the project. Current zoning on the property is R-40, and that's the primary zoning in the unincorporated area in this general area. Wesley Chapel does have some R-20 just to the north, and I think that's zoned that way. That was a subdivision that was approved by Union County. It was a, we called it an old smart-growth neighborhood. I think a couple of Commissioners may be familiar with the smart-growth provisions. But they have half-acre lots, so that's why Wesley Chapel zoned it R-20. This is in the Weddington Middle and High School cluster, served by Wesley Chapel Elementary School. You can see the capacities. Wesley Chapel and Weddington are 103 and 104 percent. And Weddington High School is currently at 91 percent capacity. There's no major funded projects in the area, except for a roundabout at Waxall Indian Trail in Newtown, although that's a funded project. There is no timeframe for when that's going to be built because there's no money available for that project right now. Waxall Indian Trail is shown as a four-lane, future cross-section with curb and gutter. Billy Howie is shown as a two-lane with paved shoulder. And although those are shown on the CTP, Comprehensive Transportation Plan, again, they're not funded projects. Those will be a long time in the future before they happen. Comp plan calls for this area to be single-family residential. You do see a large community center just to the north. That's the Target Shopping Center, if you're familiar with that, at Waxall Indian Trail on Highway 84. But again, this is in that single-family section. The conditions are mainly the same as they were back in October. We did ask for an additional condition that the developer would provide written documentation from the Village of Wesley Chapel, that the proposed entrance on the Waxall, onto Waxall Indian Trail Road is either allowed by or exempt from the town's development ordinances. And the reason we would, if the project was approved, the reason that we, the staff, would like that condition is when the developer decided to relocate the entrance, this entrance is in common area of the Wesley Oaks neighborhood. And it is also inside the Village of Wesley Chapel, so it crosses through the village. We did speak with the developer at length about approaching Wesley Chapel before this meeting and talking through and getting those approvals. I don't know if they have done that yet. That was a strong suggestion by staff. But I feel that if this project was approved, we would need something from the town saying that this was approved. And because this is a rezoning, that's not out of place. You get a lot of, you don't have many permits in place when you go through rezoning. You don't have water and sewer permits. You don't have grading permits or erosion control permits. So it is at a rezoning level. But we would want to make that a specific condition if it was approved. And finally, again, the planning Board voted four-to-two to recommend denial of the request, and primary concerns were traffic, the density of the neighborhood, and the character of the neighborhood not fitting in with the character of the rest of the neighborhoods in the area. I'll be happy to answer any questions the Board has.
I have one, Lee.
Yes, sir.
Go back to your map, please, sir, where the entrance on Indian Trail Waxall would come out. That clearly is going to another entity's property.
Yes.
I'd like to know how that can be, we're not going to condemn it. You know, I mean, how can we take another's property without, just for a commercial benefit of another developer?
Sure. So this, where it is going through is common open space for the glen at Wesley Oaks. It is, it's my understanding from talking to the developer that they have worked with the Homeowners Association and have obtained agreements that Wesley Oaks neighborhood would give them easement through that property. We, and that's actually another reason why, as staff, we would request some sort of approval by the town, or, you know, a statement saying that it was exempt from their ordinance, because number one, it goes through their jurisdiction. Number two, even though that neighborhood was approved by Union County, it's in the town's jurisdiction now. And the old smart-growth provisions allowed a density bonus as long as you met certain conditions. And one of those conditions was that 10 percent of the total site had to be common open space. Now, in this case, there's about eight and a half acres of common area there. That's give or take. That's just based on the tax records. About 3.7 acres would have been required under the county's rules. Now, again, those are the county's rules. It's not our jurisdiction anymore. So we would want to be sure that they were still meeting the town of Wesley Chapel's rules as well.
Okay. Any other questions?
And I believe the developer is here.
Okay. Right there. It should be D. Yep. No.
Lee, how do I make this large?
So you can click that right there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Good evening.
Sir, if you'd like to remove your mask so we can hear you, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Mike Davis. I'm the Director of Land Development for EPCON Communities. I've got a couple of documents I want to give to. The clerk here is one, a letter from Ms. Howie, I mean, sorry, Ms. Godley. We also have a letter from the Wesley Oaks HOA. And I have some letters here for the project from individual residents of Union County. Just to give you a little recap of our process here, Todd Ware, our counselor, he's going to represent and talk about several different things that were discussed at Planning Commission and some of your questions, too, about the access. So I'd like to introduce Todd Ware, and then I'll go through the remaining of the presentation, providing details, some other details.
Okay.
I do have paper copies of the presentation, if the Board would like it. Obviously, you see it on the screen, but that's up to you guys. If you'd like it, I can hand it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for allowing the time. Mike, thank you. My name is Todd Ware. I'm a lawyer at Johnston, Allison, and Hord in Charlotte. We have represented EPCON on general real estate, land use, and various issues for several years now. Have a longstanding relationship with them, and I'm honored to speak on their behalf here tonight. I want to start by thanking the Board. Thank you, guys, for your service, particularly in the challenging times that we currently face. As Mike mentioned, and as you guys see, he has a more detailed presentation, which I'll defer to him on a lot of the detail here, but I did want to hit the highlights on a handful of issues. And then, either before I sit down or after Mike's presentation, we're both available for whatever questions the Board may have. This rezoning process has, you know, due to COVID, gone on now for about 13 months. That's probably a few months longer than it would have taken. But through that process, you know, EPCON has addressed all of the substantive planning and development concerns that have been raised by staff, have been raised by the planning Board. In that regard, and Chairman, you mentioned access, and I just wanted to address that EPCON does have, and the letters from the HOA, I believe, speak to this as well. They have a legally enforceable agreement with the Wesley Oaks HOA to acquire the necessary easement rights for that subdivision access road across what is common area. The, you know, the approval of that from the Wesley Oaks Board is consistent with the governing documents of that community and is a legally enforceable agreement. With respect to Lee's comment about the village, we have made general contact with the village and have explained the general parameters here, use of common area of an existing community for a subdivision access road, and have received written and verbal confirmation that that is, in fact, permitted under their ordinance. So to the extent there are further conditions, you know, we'll be happy to follow up with the village and take those assurances where they need to go. The second, you know, primary substantive issue has been density. And EPCON, as Lee mentioned, has addressed that density concern and has now brought the community down to 89 lots. With respect to how that density fits into the rezoning request, taking this from an R-40 up to an R-4 conditional, Mike is going to speak more directly to what is allowed now by right on this piece of property and its true practical impact versus EPCON's plan and its true practical impact. People, actual vehicle trips, you know, the issues that lead to planning and development ordinances speaking to density as a concern, the actual practical impact. At 89 lots and EPCON's agreement to treat this as an age-restricted community, which means HUD regulations allow that you can market yourself as age-restricted, which means you have to have 80 percent of your homes in the community having at least one occupant 55 or older. EPCON has agreed through the process here to raise that to 90 percent. That 90 percent threshold will be written into the covenants for the community. Those will be recorded before the first lot is sold. Those covenants will bind the entire community. They will be enforced by the Homeowners Association, and those occupancy restrictions are legal, valid, and binding and will be enforced. EPCON has done this in Wesley Chapel. They have similar in the courtyards of Wesley Chapel. They have similar age-restricted restrictions in the covenants and monitor those and assure compliance with those. And that has been successful. There has not been any change of character of that community, any concerns with issues surrounding age restrictions versus age targets. An age-restricted community has legal teeth to it, and this one will have that legal weight to it. The next issue I just want to touch on briefly is, sort of, the mechanics of what any rezoning is, is looking at a piece of property and seeing how it fits within the broader community and looking at a proposed development, seeing how it fits. And what's critical in that is the land use plan. And Mike will have a slide that shows in more detail how we feel that this proposal is consistent with the operative land use plan. It provides a diverse offering of residential living for an aging community in a location that will allow sort of a transition from your traditional single-family development, transitioning into the community center that Lee pointed out, which is well-defined in the land use plan and on the land use map, that, you know, this property is right there at the front door of what is planned to be a community center area with more diverse housing options and more of a transition feel from traditional, more rural, single-family development to, you know, more urban, community center-type development. And, you know, we feel that EPCON is providing here an opportunity to allow, you know, those 55 and older to age in place and be close to existing amenities in the community. And then the last issue I wanted to address, as it's, you know, it's come up some during the process, is, you know, whose authority? Who can make this decision? And, you know, this is squarely property that's still within Union County's jurisdiction. Ms. Godley, I believe, in her letter to the Board speaks a little bit to the history of the property. And, you know, I understand there's been opposition voiced along the way from neighboring municipality, but this is squarely Union County property and Union County's decision and this Board's decision. And, you know, as you look through the UDO, you look through the land use plan, you know, when it speaks to, hey, what are the rules of any rezoning, it speaks to public interest, health, welfare, reasonableness, and consistency with the land use plan. And, you know, I offer on behalf of EPCON that they've worked through this process and have come to the point where what they are proposing is consistent with the land use plan. It is reasonable, and it protects the public's interest and health and welfare. So I'd ask on behalf of EPCON for approval of this rezoning. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mike.
Sir, can I ask you a question before you go?
Absolutely, Chairman.
You said that the Wesley Oaks development, their homeowners' association approved it. Was it by vote of the, of their homeowners? Or was it a decision by the Board?
It, the legally enforceable agreement that I have been privy to was board action. I can't tell you whether the Board has gone out beyond that. I can tell you that to grant the easement right for this subdivision access road, that their Board was well within their authority to enter into the agreement.
That's my question, because participating in a number of HOAs, one I'm in, they can't give the land away.
Right.
And you can change that with a majority vote. And I can tell you, I sat in a courtroom this afternoon with an HOA that made a decision that may or may not represent the neighborhood. So my question before this comes back for vote is I want to know for a fact that the homeowners' association is being legally represented.
Well, I think you have a letter, if I'm not mistaken, maybe from counsel of the HOA. You know, I'll just tell you that the Board has the authority under their CCRs, but I understand your point completely. And, you know, we will ask that question of Wesley Oaks, and, you know, the letter that they presented may speak to that.
Okay.
Anything else?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Just while we're on that subject with the Wesley Oaks HOA Board, I actually attended a Zoom meeting of their Board, and they invited, sent out, I don't know, I don't know how many. I heard they had five or six actively on, and we presented this option. I do know that they did invite others, either through Facebook or other Zoom meetings, and that's why we asked for the Board to provide a letter there. And they also had their counsel there in overseeing all this. So again, it was very above-board and straightforward. So, but we heard you, and we'll get you whatever you need. So I'll move to the next slide to kind of reiterate what Todd said regarding age-restricted versus age-targeted. Under the hope of law, it requires 80 percent of the community to have at least one resident be 55-plus. Age-targeted, no requirement on age. Again, age-restricted has teeth. Under the hope of law, it requires these restrictions to be recorded to the property through deed and CCRs. So again, it has teeth. Age-targeted, no requirement to deed restrict by age. Again, under hope of law, it requires you to do annual surveys to ensure that you're at 80 percent. Obviously, this community would be at 90 percent, and age-targeted would be no requirement of this survey. This is a snapshot of the land use plan map. You'll see the community center large, and that's per the 2014 Land Use Comprehensive Plan. Just below that, the star is the Howie property. This is, if you read the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, it talks about transitioning away from this. And we believe we meet the intent of that. So I'll move to the next slide to kind of reiterate what Todd said regarding age restricted versus age targeted. Under the hope of law, it requires 80% of the community to have at least one resident be 55 plus. Age targeted, no requirement on age. Again, age restricted has teeth. Under the, the hope of law, it'll, it requires these restrictions to be recorded to the property through deed and CCRs. So again, it has teeth. Age targeted, no requirement to deed restrict by age. Again, under hope of law, it requires you to do annual surveys to ensure that you're at 80%. Obviously, this community would be at 90%. And age targeted would be no requirement of this survey. This is a snapshot of the land use plan map. You'll see the, the community center large, and that's per the, the 2014 Land Use Comprehensive Plan. Just below that, the star is the Howie property. This is, if you read the, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, it talks about transitioning away from this. And we believe we meet the intent of that. Under the current land use plan, 2014, there's many, many pages in there about addressing housing needs, aging in place. I'm not going to read all this, but it just goes to show that Union County does need this type of product and also wants to do it based on the land use plan. The purpose of zoning is to manage growth and its impact on the community. Now, how does, how does any jurisdiction, government authority manage that? Will you manage it through density or land use plan, zoning and so forth? Density concerns are focused on people, not structures. What I mean by that is the structure doesn't get on the road, drive down the street, doesn't go to school. It's people. People impact service, traffic, schools, amenity, quality of life, etc., not structures. If you look at our age restricted community, we'll have less people. And here's how we came to these numbers. If you take a typical, single family household has 3.6, 3.67 people per home. And that's pulled from a current today demographic of households 2020. If you take our age restricted, single family household at 1.73 people per home, and that number is actually pulled from our courtyards at Wesley Chapel. So it's not a number we pulled out. It's based on the current demographics from that community. So if you took a buy right plan with R40 cluster, you can yield 49 lots. So if you take the 49 lots of a typical, single family community house at 3.67, that's 180 people within the community. If you take our age restricted plan, 1.98 units per acre or 89 units, at 1.73 people, you're at 154 within the community. Compared to the, the buy right, we'll have 26 fewer people and that's 15% less actual people than the buy right plan. We're actually reducing or less impact to, to the community as compared to the buy right plan or zoning. Here's a comparison of our age restricted plan to the buy right plan of 49 lots. We generate 508 trips per day and then a single family 49 lot would be 540. That's 32 fewer trips per day. Also, the 55 plus buyer or homeowner travels off peak hours. So they're not getting out when everybody's going to school or everybody's going to, to dinner or coming home from work. So again, we're not impacting the daily commuters. And this is based on the ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And this is studied nationally. We also are actively building in Union County. We generate jobs and also our community, communities generate good tax revenue for all the community. If you take our currently 393 completed or under construction, if you take the average, conservative average of 400,000, that's generating 1.1, just round numbers, in tax revenue. And then revenue to schools of 699,000. Again, with little to no impact to schools. So again, less impact. If you take this project, we would generate around 292,000 and then 178,000 to schools. Again, little to no impact.
Just to be clear on that.
Yes.
That's the total, including the schools on the first number and the second numbers of schools pulled out. Correct?
Well, the first number is specific total.
Total tax.
Yes.
And then 178,000 of the 292,000.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Just for schools.
Yes, sir. And then a grand total is below there of 1.4 and then 877 to the schools.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Before we move on. When you, are children prohibited?
No.
Okay. So this 55-year-old guy that's got a 25-year-old wife can have a half dozen kids there?
I, I, I doubt that, but. But I say it could, it could happen maybe. But just for an example, we just pulled the recent survey for the courtyards at Wesley Chapel. And the youngest person there was 53 and that was only one. All the rest were averaging around 65. So again, over all the communities we have, we've built, this would be the eighth one in Union County. They're all age restricted. And what we've seen is the national average is 3%, could be school. We're seeing less than 1%. So not to say you couldn't have, like you said. We've revised our project based on feedback that we received from the board, planning board and community. We reduced the lots by 26, 115 to 89. We moved the entrance to Waxaw Indian Trail Road and deleted entrance on Billy Howie because the Wesley Oaks subdivision was very concerned about it, our potential entrance in front of theirs. We also increased the tree buff, the preservation buffer on the northern portion of the property to 40 feet versus the 15 feet required on the ordinance. We then added another 15 feet of buffer, planted buffer to the 40 feet tree preservation to a total of 55 feet all along the northern. We also agreed to increase our percentage of 55 plus to 90. And again, this is age restricted and it is recorded in part of the deed bylaws. We also increased the buffer, which I'll show you along the Billy Howie road versus the 40 required to keep that feel of a rural setting or natural setting. We'll also agree to, well, we only build ranch or one and a half story homes with a bonus in the roof structure, so we don't have a two-story product. So we have no problem agreeing to no story, no two-story homes in this project. Here's our sketch. If, if you notice, we have, I know in the agenda, it made reference to, to emergency access. That's not the case. We are not installing an emergency access here. North Carolina DOT does not want, it either has to be a full movement or no, no access at all. So the only reason you see that is because the sewer is connecting across there. So we increased, we purposely did not put any lots here to make sure the rural feel and natural setting is maintained. And you can see the buffers increased up here. We relocated the clubhouse to right here. And we're going to keep as many trees and buffers as we can along the edges to, to maintain that, that screening and buffer. This is where we've got the 3.67 people per household. Again, this was pulled today.
This, this is intriguing to me. And just to make sure I'm seeing, understanding what you're putting in front of me.
Sure.
Between 20, 2000, the year 2000 and the year 2010, there were 2,965 homes built within a mile radius. And in the last 10 years, there's only been 135?
Right. Are you referencing?
I'm looking at the household, the population summary or the, so that's populate, okay, population and households. So I got it. So there was, there were 237 houses in 2000. In 2010, there's 1,025. So there's.
Right.
Seven, six, 700 houses, I guess.
That's a one-mile radius of this site.
Right. And then, but then, within the next 10 years, there's only 160 added to that?
And that's based on the past history, yes.
Right.
In that mile radius, yes.
That, that's, I thought it would be more. I would have thought it would have been more houses in that one-mile radius, but in 10 years.
I think this, well, as, as, as the board knows, Wesley Chapel, Union County is growing. It's just a matter of when. And then here's a quick benefits of our age restricted community. We touched on some of that. Provides good tax revenue to the county, public schools with a high tax base, with low cost per whole, per household and little or no impact on school. We have a strong, across the market, Charlotte market, our average price is 450 plus. That's over $200 per square foot. We are averaging, averaging now in the courtyards at Wesley Chapel of 484. So it's a, it's amazing that people want to live in this area. We also use high-quality architectural features. Our floor plans are designed specifically for the 55 plus with a 50-year painted siding, culture stone, brick accents, and also 30-year architectural shingles, to name a few. We believe our buyers are good for the local businesses, restaurants and services where they live. Obviously, now it's a little different with COVID. Hopefully, this will eventually subside, I guess is the term I'd say. And typically, our, our buyers, homeowners donate more time to charities, monies toward charities and community causes. And I'm open to any comments, questions?
I'd like for you to cover, can you go back to your map, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
Can you, yeah. Can you, can you tell me about your setbacks?
The setbacks, which ones? Now, under, the way I understand it, the setbacks of the lots, is that what you were?
Yeah. In other words, how far are the houses going to be apart?
In the, this particular, we're averaging 60 feet wide. Our setback, I believe, is five, but we're actually, our homes are 42 feet wide. The lots are 60 plus. So we're going to average anywhere from, depending on the lot. Let's see, that would be roughly 18 feet. So there's probably 18 to 20 feet between the houses. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So we'll open our public hearing. And, and Mike, I think you covered jurors and you're signed up for the speaking of public hearing. I think this.
As the applicant, just wanted to make sure I was on the list.
All right. No problem. Ruth Gouli? Okay. Come on down to the podium. Sorry about you having to wait in the hall, but public health has regulations.
That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate you having me. Good evening, commissioners and county officials. My name is Ruth Howie Godley and I am the owner of the property that's described above. I have an agreement to sell my property with EPCOM Communities for an age restricted community. In order for EPCOM to develop their community, they are requesting to rezon the property with a hearing that's scheduled tonight, the first of February. I fully support EPCOM's rezoning request for courtyards at Howie Farms. Over the years, I have had numerous offers on my property, but I was most impressed with the EPCOM plan of the development for the quality of their product and the professional manner in which they presented their offer. As we all know, population is aging and the, this project will fill a need for adult housing in a community that they will love. I didn't want to sell my property to just anyone that was going to have just any kind of development. I wanted the development to be really good for Union County and this project is that. I would be very proud to have my name connected to the courtyards at Howie Farms. It sounds good and it would be a wonderful place to live. As you prepare to consider the merits of the rezoning, I would like to share a little of the property's history. The land has been in my family for generations. My family has deep roots in Union County. My father was Roscoe Howie and we lived on Roscoe Howie Road. We were members of the Pleasant Grove United Methodist Church and always went to camp meeting, as I'm sure you probably have all been there too. In fact, I have many cousins, nieces and nephews who still have tents there. To that point, when I was given the choice in the 1990s to voluntarily annex the property into the neighboring village of Wesley Chapel, I stay, I chose to stay with Union County's jurisdiction. I am a Union County taxpayer and have been for many years. I've made the conscious decision to keep the property within Union County's planning and development jurisdiction. I do not want my property, its value and the development potential to be controlled or influenced by the village of Wesley Chapel. Union County was a great place to grow up and it was a wonderful place, it will be a wonderful place for EPCOM's senior community. Union County and its seniors need this kind of community. Your residents needs homes that fit their need and their lifestyle. I am presently living in a retirement community and am very aware of the need for the 55-plus communities. A large multi-story home on a one-acre tract of land is not conducive to what many of our aging population need and desire. There is a strong demand in Union County for patio homes, smaller homes on smaller lots that are in close proximity to the amenities to allow Union County's large and growing aging population to age in place. EPCOM's courtyard homes would be a welcome step in the right direction toward filling a void by providing a more maintenance-friendly lifestyle located close to existing and planned large community centers. The Union County Development Ordinance provides for rezoning that are consistent with the county's land use plan, reasonable and in public interest. I believe this project is reasonable and is in the best interest of the public. EPCOM's courtyard homes will serve to decrease actual population density as compared by the right use of the property. It will decrease the actual traffic compared to the buy right use and provide alternative housing for Union County's aging population, which is a stated goal of the county's land use plan. It is my sincere hope that the Union County Board of Commissioners exercise its reasonable control and judgment in approving EPCOM's rezoning request for the betterment of the property and the surrounding area. Thank you so much for your consideration and attention and it's nice to see each of you in person.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Cheryl Sane.
Good evening, chairman.
Cheryl, that beep you heard was the three-minute limit, which I failed to mention earlier.
That's okay. It's not very long.
All right.
And as nervous as I am, I'm sure it'll go faster. Good evening. As I said, thank you, gentlemen, for serving this county and for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Cheryl Sane. I live at 511 Waxaw Indian Trail Road in Wesley Chapel. I am an author, a real estate broker and a U.S. Air Force veteran. I was born and raised in this beautiful Union County and I've lived in this community for many years. I'm very much in support of this development for many reasons. I would like to share a few of them with you this evening in hopes that you too would support and see the need for this small proposed neighborhood. This neighborhood is but a speck on the map of our large county. Although a neighborhood consisting of only 89 homes, it can have a great impact on a small community like ours. Why? Because the senior citizens are the backbone of this county. As a daughter of parents who are both senior citizens of Wesley Chapel, we join together to encourage you to approve this development. I am fortunate enough to live next door to my parents and I completely understand the importance of having family nearby. Being close by to help one another out in time of need, well, there's just no price tag you can place on that. The experience that senior citizens can bring to a community like Wesley Chapel is unmeasurable. The residents of these communities are stable, knowledgeable and secure. Their retired schedules typically have less impact on road systems and benefit to our schools by way of taxes they pay. Often they are there to help support their nearby families and grandchildren. We need age restricted communities in every town and in my opinion, every large residential development would benefit from a section of 455 and older residents to help as a support system for the families. I am actually the person that canvassed the communities for, the community for signatures in support of this neighborhood. I personally met with the business owners in this area and they were all overwhelmingly positive in support of this proposed community. The comment thread mentioned was the stability of the age restricted communities. I have almost 100 signatures to prove this. These type neighborhoods, especially the Epcun communities I visited, tend to raise the property values in the area in which they are built. Their product is often more expensive and better built than the larger national builders, which tend to focus on quantity rather than quality. The population is aging, communities geared towards senior citizens are sometimes viewed unfairly. We should embrace and approve this neighborhood for the betterment of Wesley Chapel. You council members have my vote in support for this Epcun community to be approved. Once again, I thank you for your time and support. Now let's do a good thing tonight and let's approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, ma'am. Tammy Boyce.
Good evening, my name's Tammy Boyce, I live at 6001 Spence Court in Wesley Chapel. I ask you tonight to vote against Epcun Communities' conditional rezoning petition for this. The proposed Howie Farms project is, as we said, high density development situated in a true donut hole that's in Wesley Chapel. The requested R4 CZ zoning would not be in harmony with the village future land use plan that surrounds this proposed community. I ask that you maintain the harmony and direction of Wesley Chapel. The three principles that were of utmost importance when our village was, was founded were the management of our growth rate, man, maintaining a low tax rate and preserve the rural and small town atmosphere. The Howie Ta- excuse me, the Howie Farms community with high density housing brings conflict on all three of those. Allowing this will encourage others to possibly seek high density projects within similar donut holes. While on unincorporated Union County property, services that Wesley Chapel provides will be burdened. Roads, schools, police services, sewer and water and will likely increase our tax rate. A project that will add 89 houses on 45 acres is not in harmony with the surrounding R40 zoning and will not preserve that rural atmosphere. Your Union County Planning Board has voted to deny this rezoning request. The Village Council and residents of Wesley Chapel have asked you to deny this request. The neighboring towns of Marvin, Mineral Springs and Weddington have passed resolutions against this rezoning request. Please be advocates for the public that you represent and deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Patrick Noonly. Take it off please, so we can hear you.
Okay. Hey, my name is Patrick Noonie, I'm with RE/MAX, have a team called the Premier Team. We've dealt, and this is not a real estate kind of viewpoint, thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Commissioners. Epcun's been a great addition for people moving here from older people or people's parents and having Epcun choices. They build a very good product, very safe, so we, from a real estate standpoint, they've been a great company to work with. But I live in the Estates of Wesley Oaks, which is a sister neighborhood of Wesley Oaks. The Wesley Oaks HOA is comprised of the Glen at Wesley Oaks, which has roughly about 65 homes. The Estates of Wesley Oaks has about 65 homes and Wesley Oaks roughly 400. And we moved, this is Mark Hatcher, here's, he's my business partner as well, he lives five doors down from myself. And everybody, we moved in 2006, the kids were, you know, playing in the cul-de-sac and doing all that kind of stuff. And now the kids are going and the houses are getting too large, but there's nowhere close for them to go. They love Wesley Chapel and now they're going to Crest Winds or they're going to Sun Valley. There's not really a lot of choices, they want to stay close. But now there's really not a lot of options for them to stay closer, they're moving out of the county or to, you know, other places. We look at it, we ride by it every day, is, is probably as minimal of an impact, everything has impact, but probably as about as a minimal impact on the services nearby and on the roads and on the schools than anything else we can ask for in the community. There's YMCA's that are close to them, there's workout places, there's restaurants that need more business, there's, and they can probably come different hours than a lot of the other families do. But I think there would be a good shot in the arm for a lot of the businesses who are struggling in our area. So that said, you know, again, we just see what's going on, the numbers y'all see that, but everybody's getting older, not just in Union County, but nationwide and everybody needs places to go. Keeping up with a three quarter acre yard when you get to a certain age and you're helping, or you just get tired of doing it. People want to go to age restricted and, you know, more of a higher maintenance type, you know, community forum so they can kind of live their lives. And a lot of people's parents move here to be close to the children and there's really not choices for them as close as they want it to be. So I appreciate you letting me speak.
I see I got a little green light here, I'm Patrick Noonie's business partner and boss, Mark Hatcher. So we're not only here as just local real estate experts, but again, as he said, we, we live right around the corner in the Estates at Wesley Oaks. So we travel Billy Howie multiple times daily. So we've also seen the impact, the positive impact that Epcun communities have had in neighborhoods where they've been placed. So without having a big impact on our schools, because again, the 55 and older, it'll be a place that I'll be looking to go to as well, but I'm probably not going to have the 25 year old wife. I'm going to probably bring the 57 year old with me. So just in closing, you couldn't ask for a better product in Wesley Chapel, you know, with quality density, density, lower traffic as opposed to a high density community. And like you said, it's also going to help keep our businesses alive too, because they were a little bit slow with the low growth and then with COVID, they're, they're really struggling. Just walking to Hickory Tavern there and it's just, we'd hate to see it go out. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, guys.
Appreciate your time. Wendy. How are you doing tonight?
I'm fantastic, thanks so much for letting me be here tonight. I did a-
Your name, please.
I'm sorry?
Give us your name, please.
I'm so sorry, yes, you know me, so. Wendy Hensel and I'm at 308 South Providence Street. And I'm also the broker in charge of the Allen Tate Wesley Chapel office, right around the corner from this development. And I see on a daily basis the need that we have, just by managing the office and the clients that come in, but also on a personal level. My parents live in Union County and this would be a fantastic place for them to make their next home. I did a little, pulled a little statistics. There are 10,000 Union County residents that have lived in their home 20 years or more. And of those 10,000, 2,700 of them live in a two story. So all those people love to live in Union County and developments like this can keep them in Union County. Like I said, I would love to keep my parents in Union County as they, when they make the decision to change. So thanks so much and I very much support this and think it's a need.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mike Como.
Evening Chairman, members of the committee, County Commissioners, David. Look good, very sitting there for the first time I've seen you there. Wanted to start off, my name's Mike Como, I live at 1104 Hybrook Drive in Wesley Chapel. I'm also on the Town Council. One thing I wanted to start off with is if you look at just your agenda on page one, there was a question that was asked, but didn't really get answered. And it had to do with a question about the side yard setbacks. It says right here, that I underlined, the distance between the building and the side yard is going to be a minimum, five feet. So less than I can reach my arms out will be the distance between the building and the side yard setback. The main topics I want to hit on tonight are the fact that this is a donut hole in the center of R40 in Wesley Chapel. You've seen me up here before, speaking about what's being developed on our borders. This is dab smack in the middle of Wesley Chapel. The distance, the dis- density is inconsistent with the area. The schools are at or over capacity at 80, even with the 80 or 90% capacity of this subdivision being 55 and over, there will be ability to have children in this neighborhood. The new entrance or exit has not been approved by Wesley Chapel and I think you guys know that. And the biggest thing is when the developer stood up and handed out paperwork, he handed you letters, I believe, from the HOA Board of Directors, Bonnie Johnson. And there's two quotes that you want to specifically look at when you go through Ms. Johnson's attachments. Two quotes from her comments is, one, the board, the HOA board, has not changed their position in opposition of the rezoning request. So the Wesley Oaks subdivision across the street from this is still in opposition to the rezoning request. And it says that word for word in Bonnie's documentation. Additionally, in Bonnie's documentation, it said 51% of the HOA of Wesley Oaks signed a petition in opposition to this rezoning. So the developer made it sound like the neighborhood across the street was in favor of this and they're then talking about petitions. But the reality is, the facts are, 51% of the HOA across the street signed a petition opposing this rezoning. That's all I have, those are the only comments I wanted to make. I do have one question that I'd like to have answered, if it's available. Will there be a vote on this this evening or will this be vote, be pushed off to a later time?
We're going to not vote on it this afternoon.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, next Amanda Fuller.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners and staff. My name's Amanda Fuller, I'm the acting mayor of Wesley Chapel. First I want to speak to previous comments that senior housing is needed in the proposed area of Howie Farms. There are multiple senior housing neighborhoods located in and around Wesley Chapel. Within our municipal borders, there are three senior housing developments with a total of 315 homes. And right along our border, within three miles to this proposed location, the county approved the Crest Winds Senior Housing Division with a total of 615 homes. Also on our border and within two miles of this proposed location, the county approved the Twin Lakes Senior Living Facility with a total of 180 units. There are many other senior housing neighborhoods in the area, but I'm referencing the closest ones to Wesley Chapel to demonstrate that there are plenty of options for residents looking for senior housing in Wesley Chapel, in and around Wesley Chapel. Quick note, we, Wesley Chapel has not said that the road through our jurisdiction will be no problem. Actually putting a road through a property like that would be a major subdivision process and we haven't even entered into that yet with the developer. It will be a separate process from what, what the developer would go through with the county. The proposed Howie Farms development is a true donut hole of unincorporated land within Wesley Chapel's border. The Village Council has unanimously passed a resolution opposing this development, citing reasons like failing infrastructure, increased traffic and stormwater. We also have support from our neighbors in Mineral Springs, Marvin and Weddington, who passed resolutions also against this development. At meetings of the Western Union Municipal Alliance and in conversations with several county commissioners and planning staff, it has been asked that instead of saying, no, we don't want that, that instead municipalities come to you and say, no, we don't want that because this is what we want in that area. We do not want high density development in this donut hole because we have planned low density residential zoning for this specific area. We have a future land use plan and a map that clearly shows this land would be developed as R40 or roughly one house per acre. We strive to approve low density residential to encourage health, to encourage a healthy rural environment for our residents. Our future land use plan and map will be incorporated into our comprehensive plan that we're working on right now. As Lee mentioned earlier, the proposed Howie Farms development is surrounded by several subdivisions that were approved under county zoning that later annexed into Wesley Chapel. So Wesley Oaks and some others were approved under the county and then annexed into Wesley Chapel. The county has since stopped that kind of smart growth zoning. And we also think it's important to note that Wesley Oaks has a lot of flood plain that was included in their total, total calculations for density and we find that to be problematic. So under the current county zoning, Epcun is proposing 89 houses on 45.542 acres, which is roughly 1.98 units per acre. However, this is a gross density calculation. Under Wesley Chapel zoning ordinances, we require developers to subtract the buffers, the common areas, roads, stormwater ponds, flood plains, lakes, ponds, wetlands, streams, stream buffers and tree retention areas from calculations of usable land. And please note that for your own Union County 2050 plan, planning staff is recommended, recommending changes to how the county calculates suitable land for development. We have a lot of issues with stormwater and traffic problems in our area. So we really have problems with a gross density calculation of land. So under our, under Wesley Chapel zoning ordinances, you would have to subtract the road right of way, which is 7.56 acres, stream buffers, which are 1.13 acres, the stormwater pond, which is 1.31 acres, and a 30% tree save, which would be 13.5 acres. So that would be a total of 10 acres to be subtracted for road streams and the stormwater pond. If you included our updated tree conservation ordinance, it would be a total of 23.5 acres. So if you just only subtract the roads, the streams and the stormwater, under our R40 zoning, this property would yield roughly 35 acres of usable land, or 35 houses. If you added in our updated tree conservation ordinance, the property would yield roughly 22 usable acres or 22 houses. So obviously 35 homes or 22 houses is way below the proposed 89 houses. A gross density calculation would be 45 houses. And Wesley Chapel is asking you to deny this rezoning request because it does not align with our future land use plan development for low, low density residential. We want to encourage a healthy rural environments for our residents. We already have problems with failing roads, traffic, stormwater and overcrowded schools. Thank you for your time and consideration. I believe that a senior housing neighborhood developed as R40 or one house per acre would be very successful. I have talked to residents who like the senior housing neighborhoods in the area, but they don't want to live right on top of their neighbor. So that is all, thank you so much for your time and service, we appreciate it.
Amanda, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
I see you're signed up for informal comments, is that duplication here?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, you have an opportunity to speak then.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, that's been all that has signed up. We will close the public hearing and move on. Next we have informal comments. And I'm going to do it in reverse, Frank Capella. Frank, informal comments, you have three minutes.
Thank you.
A little beep will tell you.
Sure, appreciate you. I'm Frank Capella, 3901 Voltaire Drive, Wesley Chapel, 28110. I've been a Wesley Chapel resident and a Union County resident for 14 years. I have to tell you, it's been incredibly sad to watch as our town and our community's character has been taken away from us, as a few municipalities in this county continue to approve high density developments. Traffic in Western Union County is totally out of control and it will only get worse when the pandemic lifts. Roads are unsafe and we have now developed a- Roads are unsafe, and we have now developed a dangerous water runoff and flooding problem. I beseech anyone here tonight to drive around our area on a rainy night and see it all for yourselves. These monster developments have no business being built on this type of infrastructure. Some of these large projects are downright dangerous, which makes your votes to allow this reckless. We want economic development, and we want growth. We want, I'm for property rights. But we want growth that adds to our community, not alters it or morphs it into something none of us could ever have envisioned. I believe 2021 will be a confluence of events for residents which center around the poor planning of the past. First, barring a historic federal or state infusion, the cost from building high-density development on poor infrastructure will be enormous, a figure that no one here will be able to understand. Second, this is a revaluation year, so many residents will be paying more regarding their property value. Third, the county is now committed to the ownership of water and sewer, which is great, but it also means raising rates over 30% with capacity levels above 90%. I personally believe you can have all the water and sewer you like. You can make all the plans you like. But if the other infrastructure has collapsed or is unsafe, then really, what is the point? Especially if Western Union County is already nearly ruined. Student capacity there is now overflowing. The Board of Education has been sending out school impact statements for years, warning everyone about this, but no one is listening or cared. Speaking of warnings, let me read you the specific warning this county had back in 2014 regarding irresponsible growth. This is from your 2014 comprehensive plan, six years ago. Regarding infrastructure, quote, "Such rapid growth and the resultant boom in development can bring substantial benefits to the community, but also has the potential to create large infrastructural problems." Continue quoting, "Historically, Union County was characterized by rural and agricultural development. With this in mind, many of the highways in the county were originally intended to be two-lane farm roads. New development, however, has transformed many of these once-country roads into major transportation corridors, creating problems with safety and capacity." So, in six years, where are we? What have we learned? I don't think we've learned a thing. You can blame the economy, each other, schools, COVID. More importantly, your role in the past six years to allow massive projects to be built on an infrastructure that resembles something from the 1930s is now putting lives in danger. If you were aware that NC DOT had funding issues and delays, then why in the world would you approve these projects? In just the past eight months, I'm wrapping up, just the past eight months, 15 resolutions were sent to you by Wesley Chapel, Weddington, Marvin, Mineral Springs, town councils, opposing these type of high-density projects. Projects that all of you, except Commissioner Helms and Commissioner Williams, gladly approved. I read your minutes. I know who was for these projects. Finally, I believe high-density development and the problems it caused will be the top issue in the coming years. Some of you need to start explaining these careless votes to your constituents, many of whom quietly agree, through COVID, with everything I said here tonight. Thank you.
Amanda.
I'll keep this one brief. Hello, Commissioners and staff. My name is Amanda Fuller, and I'm the acting mayor of Wesley Chapel. I wanted to say that with so much political division across our country, I hope that the county and local municipalities can work together to manage the responsible growth of Union County, to make smart decisions, not just about water and sewer, but about schools, roads, stormwater, housing, and economic development. We all share the same goal, and I look forward to working with you in the future. We want to keep Union County an amazing place to live. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication to our county.
Amanda, thank you for coming in person.
Yeah, glad to be here.
And that's all we have on informal comments. Our next is additions, deletions, and/or adoption of the agenda. And I'd like to begin by saying I'd like to add one feature, and I think all Commissioners have a copy of it. And it is additional funding for subsidized childcare assistance program. I'd like to add that to consent agenda item 16A. Is there anything else?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Okay, as amended, right? Okay, good. Okay, we have a motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we have no old business this evening. And our new business, we have FY 2020 Comprehensive Audited Financial Statements and Popular Annual Financial Report. Thank you, Beverly.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Manager. Finally, we are here to present the FY 20 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We didn't think this day would ever come. One of the many challenges COVID has given us as a county is waiting on our CAFR approval. We have been waiting since November the 5th for the local government commission to actually deem our CAFR as approved, and thankfully, we received that in the past couple of weeks. Tonight, I have with us, our auditor is actually here to go over with you the results from our CAFR. Results are very positive. Even though the challenges that we faced with COVID and our economy, you will be pleased to know that we ended in a good position. I will not be presenting financial information tonight. Next week, you have a board workshop scheduled, so the detailed financial information will be presented at that time. I'm going to turn it over to Tom, but before I do, I would like to thank our management team for their cooperation with the audit this year, as well as all of our county departments and my staff for all their hard work. This is the first-ever in history audit that has been done completely virtually and remote without any documents changing hands. So, history has presented itself, even in the midst of challenges. Tom McNish is here with Elliot Davis to go over the results of our CAFR, and I will turn it over to him.
Thank you, Beverly. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening and talk about the audit. Would like to start off by thanking Ms. Lyles and the finance team and your management team. Reiterate that thanks for getting us what we needed in terms of records and information to complete the audit, particularly under the, like everything, the pandemic has made what's a very arduous and comprehensive process, even more so. And so, your management team and Ms. Lyles and the finance team stepped up and got us through that process, getting us the things that we needed to complete the audit. I'm just going to cover a couple of things very briefly. Our required communications as your auditors to you as the governing board for the county. I'll briefly go over our three audit reports, and then just one finding that we had in our recommendation there. So, as you know, you've engaged us to perform and give our opinion as to whether the county was, A, in compliance with certain requirements associated with your grants, and then also that your financial statement or your comprehensive annual financial report is properly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And why is that important? Well, of course, you know with your bondholders, credit agencies, granting agencies, folks that are interested in the creditworthiness of the county and that are interested in the county's ability to comply with grant requirements. They want that third-party opinion that you are materially in compliance and that your financial statements are accurate and that they can be relied on to make a credit decision. So, just a little bit about the planning or the audit process. We definitely, we do our homework before we come in to ask your staff for information. So, we do a lot of planning. We do our homework. We do a risk assessment to determine where the potential areas are that we need to devote most of our audit time. And so, we spend a good bit of time preparing before we come in. We do employ a materiality threshold, so we don't look at 100% of the transactions and the balances for the county within the fiscal year. If we did that, we'd never complete the audit. So, we work on a sample basis, and we test transactions and evaluate transactions using a sample of various populations. Internal controls over financial reporting that your finance team exercises, those are very important to us in terms of that risk assessment that I mentioned. So, that internal controls can be anything from a monthly bank reconciliation to the approval process for dispersments and looking at thresholds. Those are important to us. We want to evaluate those internal controls. If we think that they're weak in a certain area, then that means we have to audit those areas harder. Whereas if internal controls are strong, that reduces our risk, and we don't spend as much time in those areas in terms of the validity of the balances and activity that are reported in your comprehensive annual financial report. So, our responsibility, as I mentioned, is to provide that opinion as to whether the financial statements are fairly stated, and then also, in our single audit, our separate audit, whether the county is materially in compliance with the grant requirements that come from the federal, state, and local agencies. Significant accounting policies, these are going to be policies that your finance team employs. A lot of those are disclosed in the footnote disclosures. We audit those also to make sure that they're reasonable and that they're in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, contrary to what oftentimes folks believe, accounting is not an exact science. It does involve estimates. So, estimates for useful lives, for depreciable assets, estimates for things like your OPEB liability. Those are going to be things that are, they're not hard numbers, but they do require some subjectivity. So, we need to look at the assumptions of those and make sure that we're comfortable that they are leading to a reasonable balance, a reasonable activity within, again, reported in the financial statements. Financial statement disclosures, I mentioned those. Those are giving context to the basic financial statements. So, those are going to be your footnotes. Those are comprehensive in and of themselves, but they are going to give some additional information so that the financial statements make sense and they're in the proper perspective. We're going to look at, all financial statements are going to have some level of misstatement in them, okay? So, that's, the question is whether it's material or not. So, we want to look at any misstatements that we come across and make that determination. And in terms of the misstatements that we may have come across in terms of the county's financial statements, those were corrected, or they were so immaterial that they weren't worth further evaluation. So, it's the material ones that we're worried about, and we did not, in our opinion, those did not exist in the county's financial statements. So, that enabled us to give an unqualified or an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's good news. That's where you want to be. Testament to your finance team that the financials were stated correctly in all material respects, in accordance with GAAP or those accounting principles that I mentioned. At the end of the process, we do get a written management representation letter from your team to reiterate certain assertions about the financial statement process and about what is disclosed. So, just putting kind of a nail or a final cap on just going through a checklist, and so, we get that representation letter from your management team, just documenting those items. We didn't have any disagreements with management. If we had items that we were unable to resolve, as far as how something should be reported or how it should be treated in the financial statements or within your compliance, and if we were not able to resolve those with management, we'd be required to come to you as a governing board to find a resolution on those. So, we didn't have anything like that. We're not aware of any consultations that were required by your management team with other accountants. If there was a particular issue that we were unable to audit or that we didn't have the expertise or background or skill set to take care of, then that would be required, but nothing like that. We discussed a number of significant issues with management. That's to be expected. I think there was a good rapport in terms of discussing how things should be presented and arriving at the right answers. So, that was definitely part of our process. We didn't have any difficulties in performing the audit. So, if we felt like we weren't getting accurate information fluidly, or if we were being stonewalled, then again, we'd be required to come to you to seek resolution for that instance, but nothing like that occurred. As far as findings, we did have a significant deficiency in terms of Medicaid and some eligibility documentation issues. Now, I will tell you, to give some context, this is not uncommon with North Carolina counties that we audit. We had just one instance with Union County. If you compare that to the field, it was pretty good. You want to be aware of it. You want to have it in front of you. You want to try to correct those documentation issues. But that was the limit of the findings that we had. We didn't have any financial statement-related findings. Again, testament to your team that we didn't have any of those. Findings are not necessarily a bad thing. What we look for is if a finding occurs, that there's quick corrective action to remedy it. So, that's always the productive side of a finding, if we have one in the audit process. No other significant written communication, other than the engagement letter that the county signs at the beginning of the process. So, other than that and the management representation letter, no other significant written communications. So, I mentioned our audit opinions. And again, for the financial statements, so, in terms of our testing and being able to come to the conclusion that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, again, you've got a clean opinion there, an unmodified opinion, and that's where you want to be as far as the financial statement audit. Now, as a local government, like any other local government, you are reporting under government auditing standards. And that means you have what's called a gas report or Yellow Book report. And that really focuses on those internal controls that I mentioned, and also internal controls, not only over financial reporting, but also over compliance. So, this is where, if we did have any issues related to financial statement findings, those would be referenced here. Same thing with compliance findings. That would be direct material to the financial statements. So, we did not have any of those, and again, that's a good result for the audit. I mentioned the single audit, or our compliance audit on your grant funds. So, I think for fiscal year 2020, the county utilized or expended a little north of $40 million in federal, state, and local grants. That's to be expected. Obviously, you want to take advantage of those funds as they're available to serve the community and to make good use of those funds. However, they do come with a lot of compliance requirements. So, what's required under the Uniform Guidance, which is federal law, is that we perform a separate audit. And in this audit, we're giving that opinion as to whether the county is materially in compliance with all those strings that are attached to your federal, state, and local funding. So, for your major programs that we audited, we were able to issue our opinion that the county was materially in compliance with those requirements. If that were not the case, then you run the risk of having to return funds or have expenditures that were not allowable under the grant. Obviously, that would be a risk, but a good result on your single audit for this year. And finally, our findings and recommendations. Again, Medicaid eligibility, it's a common finding that we have in terms of maintaining documentation on hand of things like income verification, household makeup. Documentation that those things have been looked at. So, what happened in terms of the finding, initially, when we requested those items, they weren't available. However, subsequently, eligibility for those instances were able to be proven. So, it was really just a matter of that internal control over keeping the documentation available. And again, not an uncommon finding. We only have the one instance for Union County. So, Mr. Chairman, that's my brief overview of the audit process. And certainly, any questions that the Commissioners would have, we'll take it this time.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Tom. I also wanted to point out, in your agenda tonight, you also have our PAFR, which is the Popular Annual Financial Report. We have revamped that this year, so I encourage you to take a look at that, which is a very condensed version of our financial statements. It's easier to read. I also encourage our citizens to actually look at that. I also encourage our citizens to actually look at that, it's on our website. And I want to give a special thanks to Catherine and her group and Public Communications with actually helping us through that process to make that document very user-friendly. So, and that's all I have. Thank you all.
Thanks, ma'am. And I think we need a motion to accept, I have a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the FY 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and FY 2020 Popular Annual Financial Report.
Okay. Have a motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Beverly. Next, we have Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, Well Rehabilitation Program.
Thank you, Chairman.
Patrick.
I'd just like to start by saying thank you to Tracy Colley and Lee Jensen, who were extremely helpful in the development of this. At this point, what you're going to see is a concept. Well contamination in Union County is a fairly well-documented issue. The short line water program that you all have implemented is taking great strides to try to address that. It's also come up in the 2050 comprehensive plan. So as staff, we sat down and said, is there anything else we can be doing? And what you're going to see tonight is a result of that effort. And what we're hoping for, again, this is a concept, is to get your feedback and ultimately, hopefully, your support in taking it to the next step. First of all, what is CDVG? CDVG stands for Community Development Block Grant. It's a federally funded program that's run out of HUD, the Housing and Urban Development Department. We are an entitlement community. Any county that is over 200,000 in population can apply to be an entitlement community. So what that means is we get a direct allocation from the federal government every year. The state also has a CDVG program, so a lot of jurisdictions in North Carolina can apply to the state, but we get our allocation directly from the federal government. Funds are distributed based on the census of the participating jurisdictions. So Union County, Monroe, Wingate, Marshville, Waxahaw, Stallings, and Weddington are the ones that currently participate. Indian Trail, Wesley Chapel, and Fairview have expressed interest. Indian Trail is a big one. They have a large population, so if they are willing to participate in this program, our allocation would be much higher in the coming years. These projects are only eligible for low to moderate income individuals, and I'll get into what that means here in a second. And then just up there, you can see some of the allowable project areas. Acquisition of real property, clearance and demolition, rehabilitation of residential structures, public facilities and improvements, code enforcement, public services, and special economic development, and job creation. Most of what we've done the first five years is infrastructure-related. Several waterline projects, a few sidewalk projects, and then some in the public services. We've helped supplement our senior nutrition program just here in the last few years. Low to moderate income, if you look on this slide at the bottom, you'll see I have a dollar amount that's circled. For a family of four in Union County, if you make less than $66,800 as a household, you would qualify for CDVG funding. It's a sliding scale depending on the number of people in the household, so you can see you go up and down that. An elderly couple that is on social security, if they made less than $53,450, they would Again, this is a proposed pilot program. The contaminants in Union County's well water vary, and the severity of symptoms that people have vary depending on the contamination and the length of exposure. Ultimately, applications would be submitted to our planning department. Planning would review and verify income requirements. Once verified, the applications would be sent to our environmental health folks. They would do an initial well inspection, an analysis, and a water quality test. Environmental health would work with a well contractor to determine what's the best corrective action and ultimately perform that work. After the work's completed, environmental health would verify the work was completed and that the issues were addressed. These are some of the questions that we still have. This is at a point where we thought the board needed to hear it, but we haven't addressed all the issues that we know we're going to have. So does the program need to work in conjunction with the short line water extension? It is not designed to, but it certainly could. Is there a demand for the program? And if there is a demand, how do we prioritize projects once we receive them? The program is only for initial repairs. Some of the repairs that will be done, whole home water filtration, there will be some ongoing maintenance of that. There are filters that have to be changed out. So identifying that and communicating with the homeowners so they know exactly what to expect, I think is going to be an important program. What happens if the homeowner sells the home? Say we do this work, three weeks later, they sell it to someone who doesn't qualify for the CDVG program. Does environmental health have the staff capacity? We are currently trying to fit this in multiple departments, so we don't have to ask for additional staff to run this program. We don't know that those departments are where it needs to live long-term, but we feel strong that they can support it in its pilot program. We have to procure a well contractor. With federal procurement, there's a lot of red tape, so we still have to figure out how we can procure that well contractor to get them on staff. A lot of the water quality issues stem from failing septic tanks on site. So if we get out there and find that the issue with the well is really tied to the septic tank, do we address both? Because without addressing the septic, we don't, we can't address the water quality issue. And then ultimately, there will be legal agreements that need to be developed, waivers to go on people's property, waivers to do the work, that sort of thing. So right now, the county has about $100,000 unallocated in the CDVG program, and that is what we are proposing to put toward this as a pilot program. We presented to the Human Services Board, and they had some good questions, and ultimately, they did support the project and recommended that we bring it to you all for this same presentation. So with that, I can answer any questions y'all may have.
Any questions for Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Patrick. Thank you for doing this. I know you have a rich experience at Wingate as town manager of CBDG Grants.
Yes, sir.
And I was amazed to hear you tell about some of them. The one thing I've learned is as I get older, there is pronouncements that may or may not be true, but then after an examination, the truth comes out. And I'm very excited for you to present this tonight in open meeting because what it highlights is staff has been working on this situation on wells in the county that will probably never, ever see county water, remote locations. So I have utmost confidence that you will come up with a qualifying matrix. My suggestion would be it does not work in connection with short line extension. I think where we can give them county water, that's the best and cheapest alternative. And as far as how do we prioritize, I would say my suggestion would be start at the lowest income of people who can, are willing to participate and work your way up there. And I know you'll bring those options back to us whenever you have them in place, but I commend you for what you've done. You're sort of the odd man for the odd jobs, and this is, but...
I think I'll take that as a compliment.
Well, it is. It was meant as a compliment. And I would encourage you to work with Catherine and Communications to let people know that we are working on this water situation, have been working on it, and will continue to do things to get safe drinking water to the people of Union County.
Yes, sir. And that is a great point about the location. There are certain individuals in this county that are a distance from water mains, that it'll be a long time before they see it. And there's also individuals that, you know, it may only be four or five years, but when you're drinking contaminated water, the sooner you can get that issue addressed, the better their health will be. So there will be obviously applications from both, and we will come back with a recommended prioritization list.
And if you would, when you come back, have the matrix, have the plan so that we can go ahead and enact it and not spend another two weeks or a month or two months getting the details worked out.
Yes, sir. We were at a point tonight that we felt we needed to share this with you, but when it comes back, it'll be fully fleshed out.
It's good news, and we need good news at every meeting.
Yes, sir.
Patrick, we appreciate you taking the leadership in doing this. We've been talking about effective wells ever since I've been on the board, for over eight years. And fortunately, the last couple of years, manager and staff have addressed the short line extension to help a number of people. But I would encourage that, I just want to say this, that all people that have a well should have them tested to understand what their exposure is. And so, I mean, that's critical. If this can help those that think they can't afford to have a well testing, I appreciate you considering that.
And that is a great point that I glossed over. This program is proposed to be a 0% cost to the homeowner. So we can get refunded for those water quality tests through this program, and we can perform the work at no expense to those homeowners.
Thank you very much for your leadership.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Tom?
Patrick, many years ago, we had a similar type project in the, over in the Fairview area, for lack of a better explanation, Stallings, Fairview, where a neighborhood, a poor minority neighborhood, needed some infrastructure and the other entities stepped in. And that seems like, you know, what we're going with here. And, you know, with the parts in the east, anytime that we could get it to a neighborhood, maybe there's an area where we have a, area where we may have a lower income group, it would still benefit the people who those, who water lines could go by their homes, things like that. So I would, I would look at projects like that, too, and just say, you know, can we get more bang for the buck? I'm sure just because, you know, they can't deny us allowing people to tap on with water lines going past homes of people who may make more money. So that would be something I would look at. And also, I had some of our state delegation in the legislature tell me maybe four or five years ago that monies were available through the state for us to be able to help extend water lines. And along with this money, go and look for any kinds of monies that were available. At that time, I don't think the management direction was to, was interested in doing that very much, but I know that two of our state leaders at that time, both had said that there was monies set aside and available. We've always been told that Union County makes too much money to get low, low-income grants, but I don't think that's what these were, so check into that as well.
We certainly can.
Do you have any kind of estimate, Patrick, in terms of the timeline for answering some of these outstanding questions, particularly what might qualify for some of these initial fixes?
The plan is to have this go live July 1 with the new fiscal year, so we would anticipate having the final program back to you in the next, I would say probably by beginning of May. Each individual fix is going to be somewhat unique to that property, so we won't actually know that until we get environmental health and a well contract out there to look at the individual situation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One more question. Patrick, will this become an ongoing thing with CBDG money?
I think calling it a pilot program, it's just that, it's got potential to do that. If there's no demand for it, which I don't anticipate there won't be, but, you know, maybe it doesn't make sense going forward. If it is successful, we do get that annual allocation, so we can certainly program money every year moving forward. Again, if the demand's there and the program works, it's probably, it's probably a good opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Next, we have, have the appointment to the Board of Equalization and Review. Mike Rapes' term on the Board of Equalization and Review expires in February 2021. His vacancy has been advertised in accordance with the Board's rules and procedure. Mr. Rapes submitted his application for reappointment, and no other applicants have been received. I'll make a motion that we reappoint Mike Rapes to serve on the Board of Equalization and Review. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the county manager's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things for the board this evening. Would like to thank the Beverly Lyles and her finance team, of course, the auditors for the work they did this year in preparing our CAFER report. You may have noticed, and I believe I called to your attention individually, that provided you with the Union County Public Schools CAFER for fiscal year 20, in your information-only packet on the agenda tonight, and would encourage you to review that document as well. Speaking of Union County Public Schools, we also included the monthly report for December 2020. This would be their statement, monthly statement of expenses, revenues, has information regarding their operating capital projects, along with personnel counts, et cetera. This is a report that the county is scheduled to receive on a monthly basis, and you can expect to receive that on your agenda for your information in the information-only section going forward. For the board's attention, just to let you know, on Wednesday, January 27, the management team, finance team, public work staff met with our three rating agencies this year. Again, because of the COVID environment, things were a little bit different, so we did those meetings virtually. We met with Standard and Poor, Fitch, and Moody's, and were interviewed by all three rating agencies relative to revenue bond projects. They were very interested in what the current climate is in Union County and all the things that we have going on here. All three were very good interviews in terms of information that was exchanged. We should have information back from them in several weeks. If I had to look into my crystal ball, I don't believe we're looking at any kind of bond rating decrease. I think we will stay stable and consistent with our current bond ratings. As you are aware, that the limiting factor in our bond rating increase really at this time is the size of our utility and size of our organization. Higher rated, higher bond ratings are generally reserved for very, very large utility organizations. So we look forward to getting those, that feedback from the rating agencies in a couple of weeks. As Beverly mentioned to you, you have a budget workshop scheduled on Monday, February 8, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Beverly will be providing some updates on current financials, along with some additional On Monday, April 15, you have a public works update workshop scheduled from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. prior to your regularly scheduled board meeting. This is the second of three meetings related to public works topics. You've already had one, this will be the second one. We'll be mainly focusing on enterprise financials and the results of the rates study that has been conducted and long-awaited. Mr. Simpson? You've expressed some interest in that in the past, so we look forward to providing that to you at that time. In addition, we have, and are in the process of scheduling, a meeting on March 11 with our municipal, for our boards, for our Board of County Commissioners to meet with our municipalities. This will be the third meeting of this type that we've had. We'll have it at the Ag Center. There'll be several topics discussed amongst those, there will be discussions on public works, but this will also be an opportunity, as it has been in the past, for our municipalities to address our Board of County Commissioners and for them to give you an update of what's going on in their local jurisdictions and what their priorities are, and if there are any opportunities for the municipality and the county to work together on various projects or initiatives, I'm sure that will be discussed at that time. We look for that meeting to start somewhere around 9:00 and go through at least lunch early afternoon, just as it has in the past. In closing, we have communicated... In closing, we have communicated, the chair has communicated with the representatives of the school board regarding a joint meeting of the Board of County Commissioners with the Board of Education to take place on March the 18th at the Ag Center, beginning at 6:00 p.m. in the evening. An agenda is currently being drafted. I've spoken to each one of you, I believe, at this point regarding the agenda, so if you have any further feedback for me as we finalize that draft and present it to the chair for communication to the school board, please do so at the early part of this week. We hope to have that out into the school board for review by midweek. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Rushing?
No comments.
Mr. Simpson?
No comments.
Mr. Reeves?
No comments.
Mr. Reeves?
Well, I would be remiss to pass along two things. One, I asked Deputy Manager Lancaster at last week's agenda meeting, I said, I, I've had so many emails about how the COVID rollout's going in Union County, and I know, last meeting, Commissioner Rushing and Commissioner Simpson gave them kudos, and I actually had no comments, and I felt bad about it afterwards. And I asked Michelle, I said, what one person is making it work over there? And she said, there is no one person. It's every person. Because I have a sister-in-law and brother-in-law that live in Stanley County, and they've had their first shots, didn't even talk about their second shots. They're calling, they can't get ahold of them, so I'm very proud of, and I have nothing to do with it, but I am very proud of the organization that this county has. The other thing, I was contacted by Ms. Lyles' daughter, Courtney, and I believe I'm correct, she's trying to raise money for leukemia. And I would challenge all of us to, you know, give whatever you can. This little girl is a mini-me of her mother, and as her daddy told us last week, me and the manager ran into him, and he said, she is just off the charts on everything, and she's going to be something else, going off to college, and then when she chooses a career. But if any of you feel led to, contact Beverly, and she'll put you in touch with her daughter. Cancer has touched every family somewhere sitting up here. Thankfully, it's not in my immediate family, but we live in a world now where we're only one day away from some upsetting things. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, I appreciate it. Beverly, thank you very much for outstanding job you and your team have done. We appreciate it. I want to also express my appreciation to Amanda Fuller. I had a conversation with her a couple of weeks ago, and towns do, are presenting resolutions, but, you know, I said, it means more when you come up and explain what you mean, so I appreciate her taking time to do that. As for the March 11th meeting, I'm getting feedback from the towns. They're getting excited about the opportunity to get back together. I think they've, I've had several of them tell me that was one of the best things we've ever done, to have that meeting and have that communication. So with that, I will make a motion that we adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.